Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a regular scheduled council meeting of Beaver Creek City. And before we get started tonight, I have a couple proclamations I'd like to make. And these are proclamations that we're very proud to have made more than once over the years. And so, I'm gonna start off with Mr. John Aykroyd. If you'll come up and join me, please. John, I know how you feel. It's just sometimes a little, is it worth walking that far?
Yeah, it's always there. It's been a long day, right?
Well, I'm gonna read this again. We've read it to you many times, and you're so deserving, and your organization's so deserving, so I'm gonna read it again. Whereas the Creek Classic Soccer Tournament is in its 26th year of successful operation, and has become one of the largest two-day tournaments in the country. And whereas the Creek Classic brings approximately 11,000 people to the Beaver Creek area, which includes more than 6,000 players, along with their coaches, parents, and managers. And whereas the Creek Classic brings in about $10 million to the local economy. And whereas the Creek Classic is part of the Beaver Creek Soccer Association, Beaver Creek's largest organization, which attracts thousands of people to the Beaver Creek area, it is a nonprofit organization operated solely for the benefit, betterment, I'm sorry, of the youth of Beaver Creek. Now therefore, I Bob Stone, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, along with the entire city council, do hereby proclaim June 2nd and June 3rd, 2018, as Creek Classic Days, and the City of Beaver Creek, and urge all citizens of our community to join me in recognition of this outstanding occasion. John?
Thank you.
Thank you for all you have done for all these many years.
Appreciate it. Really, 25 years ago, we said we couldn't do it, and we did it. And a lot of good people, mostly all volunteers, so we're proud to be part of Beaver Creek.
So, we're proud of you and all your people that work with you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Kelly Hill will join me up here. Mr. Hill and I have met on several occasions as well.
Yes, sir.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you as well.
So, I'm gonna read this to you again. Whereas scleroderma is a chronic, and how many years did it take me to learn how to pronounce that?
Three.
I think I've got it just about right.
Three, you got it. You mastered it, yes, sir.
Is a chronic progressive autoimmune disease that leads to hardening and thickening of the skin and connective tissues, which affects an estimated 15,000 Ohioans and 300,000 people in the United States. And whereas, a patient's immune system becomes overactive and attacks its own tissues through an overproduction of collagen, causing the thickening and tightening of the skin, as well as serious damage to internal organs, including the lungs, the heart, the kidney, esophagus, and gastrointestinal tract. And whereas, prompt and proper diagnosis and treatment can minimize the symptoms of scleroderma, and lessen the chances for irreversible damage, as there is no cure at this time. And whereas, the Scleroderma Foundation's mission is support, education, and research to help find the cause of and cure for the disease. Now therefore, I Bob Stone, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, along with the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2018 as Scleroderma Awareness Month in the City of Beaver Creek, and urge the citizens of Beaver Creek to support the Scleroderma Foundation in its mission. So, thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you. Mayor Stone, entire city council, this is, what, the fourth, third or fourth year?
Third.
That we've done, third year that we've done this. Thank you for being so open. Diane, you are Jim, for always taking my phone calls and being so nice to me on the phone. When I sound like a telemarketer when I'm doing my introduction, you don't hang up on me, so I appreciate that. Mayor Stone, for reaching out and saying hello during registration and the marathon. And, once again, the entire city council for showing up to our fundraiser. And without even announcing, just one or many members of the council show up, and I really, really appreciate you. And this is our 20th year for the Scleroderma Foundation, the 29th of June, Worldwide, the Scleroderma Month. And, once again, I really appreciate you, and I love being a part of Beaver Creek community. Been here for nine years. Retired Air Force, my wife and I both, and both of our boys have been groomed through the Beaver Creek school system. So, once again, thanks, sir. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We each have an agenda before us. Any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda before us.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes, April 23rd, 2018, regular meeting minutes.
I'd like to make a motion, and I'll second. Mr. Curran?
Here.
Councilmember Litteral?
Here.
Councilmember Rushing?
Here.
Councilmember Upton?
Here.
Councilmember Van?
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Here. At this point, I'd like to turn this over to Councilmember Litteral for the pledge.
I congratulate you. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could take a moment, as yesterday was Memorial Day, and again, thank you to those members of the service who have protected us and allowed us to have the types of meetings and to conduct the business that we're going to have today all across the nation, because we have the freedom that our military and our armed forces has provided us by serving sincerely above self. So, thank you to all those who have served. Thank you. May we see them?
Thank you. All right. We each have an agenda before us. Any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda before us.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes, April 23rd, 2018, regular meeting minutes.
I'd like to make a motion, and I'll second. Mr. Curran?
To accept as submitted.
Yes.
I have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of the April 23rd, 2018, regular meeting as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is the minutes from the May 14th, 2018, regular meeting. Any changes?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no changes, I would move for approval of the May 14th regular meeting minutes.
Second. I have a motion and a second. A motion and a second to approve the May 14th regular meeting minutes as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Public hearing, PC 17-4.
This is an application filed by Dr. Ron and Tammy Roddy, 109 Castle Pines Court, Zine, Ohio, 45385. The applicant requests an administrative site plan review and approval for 1.7 acres of land to construct a new medical office building. The property is located at 4090 Indian Ripple Road, further described as Book 3, Page 10, Parcel 223, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Does the applicant have anything that they want to present this evening?
Thank you for allowing us to join you.
If you could just remind us of the name and address.
Ron Roddy, 109 Castle Pine Court, Beaver Creek, 45385.
Thank you.
My wife Tammy and I reside there with our nuclear family of eight children and a dog, like most of you, right? First of all, Planning Commission has already heard my appreciation, but I'd like to repeat it in front of council. We would like to express our thanks to Randy, Jeff, and the entire group that you have. They gave us such good guidance along the way here. I'm sure you already know it, but you have a tremendous asset at your disposal here, and we appreciate you all. Their guidance has been priceless, truly. My current practice of over 20 years is located at 2355 Lakeview Drive, up near Fairfield Commons Mall. We've decided, many years ago, it was time for upgrade and expansion. Took us quite a little while to find the property to do so. We've moved a little further than we ideally wanted to, clear up to Indian Ripple, but it turns out to be really an ideal property for what we'd like to do. Some of you are aware that I was a member of the city's Long Range Planning Commission over 20 years ago, and we developed a secondary, I think, land use plan. Little did I know that 20 some odd years later, I'd be trying to make use of that same land use plan. I appreciate all your help with that. We will very likely maintain the existing location that we have there. Dr. Schneider, my partner, will maintain a practice there, and we will probably have an associate there. So, we'll be working out of two different offices, more than likely, so expanding the Beaver Creek tax base to some extent as well, we hope. For your consideration tonight, I'm a general dentist with a focus on implant and reconstructive dentistry. We're a low-volume, comprehensive care practice, and our new facility is designed to provide state-of-the-art care with traditional kind of old-school patient relationships. We think these values and our building plan fit the site at hand ideally. Like you, it's our goal for this facility to meld well into the individual site, into the community, and into the city for decades to come. I'm joined tonight by architect Jim Hawthorne, project manager Gene Tartell, and by my wife Tammy, owner of TR Holdings and TPM Renovations. I'm glad to answer any questions or concerns that you may have, or to defer to them as necessary.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions I can start with, or?
We will hear staff, and then we'll have some public, and then we'll get back to you shortly.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. The case you have before you is PC 17-4. It's the Roddy Dental ASRA, or Administrative Site Plan Review and Approval Process. The applicant's looking for approval of a detailed site plan to construct his professional office building on 1.7 acres. Project's located in southern Beaver Creek, it's about a mile east of the intersection of Indian Ripple Road and 675. This is a closer view. It's a few hundred feet west of Apple Blossom Drive in Indian Ripple. To the south is the Vineyard Church, and then to the east is a daycare, yeah, to the east is a daycare, and then there's a private residential to the north and to the northeast. And then there's also residential, it's multifamily, but it's medium-density quad units to the west. This is the 1.7 acre site. They do have 200 feet of frontage on Indian Ripple Road. It's about 370 feet deep, and there's a small 20-foot wide piece of property that actually has frontage on Apple Blossom. One of the conditions in your motion, it was brought up by Planning Commission, was that no driveway or anything be put on that 20-foot piece of property. It is a, there is a storm sewer, oh, I'm sorry, a sanitary sewer easement on that 20 feet, so they don't have any plans to do it. It was just kind of a second, you know, an additional condition, just for safety reasons. Again, the property was rezoned late, or I'm sorry, middle of last year. It's not reflected on the zoning map yet, on this particular zoning map, but it is R01, that residential office. It was, that R01 was extended and ultimately up everywhere that's shaded yellow. There is R01 to the east, again, that multifamily to the west, and then there's the CPUD to the south. Seen here is the proposed site plan. They have, they're proposing one access point to the site directly off Indian Ripple Road. Again, nothing's proposed on this 20-foot piece of property. In terms of parking, based on the calculation of the number of offices and chairs that they're proposing in the dentist's office, they're required to have 51 parking spaces, and they show 52, including three ADA compliant parking spaces. So, they meet the standard in the zoning code for the number of parking spaces, as well as the standard for ADA requirements for the number of designated parking spaces. They're showing the one trash receptacle on the site. It's to the northwest. You know, it was placed so that they can get a trash truck in and easily, you know, front-load that dumpster and then get out. We did have the landscaping. There is wooded area to the south, I'm sorry, to the north, to help shield that dumpster and dumpster enclosure. They're gonna be required to use an enclosure that matches the building, which seen here is the proposed architectural elevations of the building. It's a one-story building, 8,000 square feet in the front, and then in the back, there is a walkout basement, so that's an additional 3,600 square feet of office space. You can see they're proposing a majority to be brown brick, and then they have some cast stone throughout the site as well, or throughout the building as well, and then some tan ephesus. And they do, these are the four-sided architecture features, and they do show the same use of that four-sided architectural features. Again, the north elevation, it looks taller because the grade is right here, so it is a walkout basement. But a majority of the building is, I believe, 18 feet tall. This is the proposed landscaping plan, and they do show a good mixture of evergreen trees, shrubs, and decorative plants throughout the site. Originally, there was, there wasn't very many, there wasn't very much landscaping in this area, and we were concerned about headlights shining onto the neighbor's property. So, we did have them add additional landscaping, as well as this hedge row that will be in these areas, and they'll be at least two feet tall when they're planted, evergreen hedges, so that they provide that headlight protection year-round. Planning Commission and staff both recommend approval of the applicant's request. There are conditions in your motion for consideration, and I'll be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, is there anyone in the audience tonight that would like to speak to this application? If there's anyone who would like to address council about this application, please come Seeing none, we will close the public input. Council input. Do we, Councilmember Litteral, would you like to start?
No, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Upton?
I just want to, it's just a comment, something I observed recently, and I want to commend staff for. I noticed the signs they put out on the property stating that there's a commercial development in review, and I just realized that, and I appreciate that. It's another avenue for residents to be able to realize, you know, there is a development going into, at least the city line, so that they can contact and get more information. So, I commend you for that. Better than that, I have no comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Rushing. Councilmember Van?
Does the clerk need to read the written input we've got regarding this? I would like to have a, just a history of the little 20-foot. How did that get left there? Because somebody at one point thought we were gonna need a driveway there?
This was originally a larger lot to the north, and it was just split out. Just when they, when they bought it, they, I presume the homeowner just didn't want to keep that storm, or that easement, so it kind of got deeded over to this property as well. So, it was just a matter of, it was all part of one big property, and just the southern portion of that property was the easement. And now, since, when they bought the western half of that larger property, the easement...
It's an odd shape.
It is.
Something to mow.
It is. Yeah. I mean, there was, there's never been any, and when we went to the rezon, and we told them there's never gonna be a driveway there, you know, unofficially, we gave them that heads-up that we'd never recommend approval of a site plan or anything with, anything there. It's just too narrow at 20 feet, and you would need 12 feet of minimum for a one-way drive, and then that wouldn't leave you any spot, any buffer on either side, especially with the house being right there, we wouldn't want to put a driveway. But, I mean, it's just kind of a remnant part of the larger piece that was acquired by Dr. Roddy.
A little odd. I have no other comments.
Councilmember Upton?
Thank you, Mayor Stone. Just a quick question for staff. In relation to where the trash receptacle is there, how close is that to the property behind it, or above?
I believe, to the, to the nor, or I'm sorry, to the north or to the west?
Yeah, to the north.
I mean, we're talking 40 feet from that property line?
To the house, maybe.
And then...
Any idea of the house?
Let me get to the aerial. This is, this is actually a barn, a shed.
Okay.
The house is up here, so the trash receptacle will be about in this location, and this is a hill here.
Okay.
And we're gonna have it screened with an enclosure that's made out of that brown brick.
All right. No, that's a barn and not a residential.
Right.
Or a full-time residential.
Yeah, that's...
Structure. I feel a little better. We've had these parcels come into, where they butt up against neighborhoods in the past, and I know we do our best to move the trash receptacles out, and, you know, kind of hide them away. It just seems like we don't limit when the trash companies can pick it up. So, at 4:00 in the morning, when they come pick up the trash, you know, and it's right up against the neighbor's home, it can cause some disturbance there, but I don't think we should have that issue here. That's all I got.
Okay.
Thanks.
Councilmember Curran?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Vice Mayor?
Hi. Yeah, I just have a question. I appreciate your forward thinking as far as the landscaping goes, to prevent some of those headlights. What are the typical normal hours of business? Is there something that closes at 5:00 or 6:00? Because if those are the normal business hours, it would seem that headlights would be limited.
Yeah, I mean, most, throughout most of the year, other than in the wintertime. From my understanding, from the discussion with the owner, that, you know, they wouldn't typically, I mean, they wouldn't be in all night dentist's office. They would close at typical 5:00 or 6:00 or 7:00.
They don't take emergency, like my tooth will outing or something?
I mean, maybe occasionally, but that wouldn't be their standard operation.
No, I think that's great. I think that landscaping will help tremendously, and I think that's a very good idea for the neighbors around there. So, thank you.
Okay. I'd like to tee into what Councilmember Upton was talking about, in that there is still a concern I have, with not so much with the property in the north, but the properties to the west, with the trash, not the location, but the timing. And we have done it before, I think, in set times, that you can't have trash picked up before 7:00 in the morning, or 8:00 in the morning, or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, that's an option.
Because...
We've not been able to enforce it, those...
Well, it may be.
We can have the owner work with the trash company. I mean, it would be something that we would be able to, to police, but at least let them know that, you know, they're not, they're not supposed to have trash picked up until next time, whatever time council sees fit.
I know that there's one close to me, and it, my house is newer than the business, so I'm not complaining. The business has every right to do it. But it, it is, can be disturbing. And even though this is a front-load, it's still gonna have to back up just a little bit. And if you back up, there goes the dinger. So, if we can get something in there where either to limit that pickup as far as the early morning, or to have the backup alarms off, which they probably can't do.
Probably not allowed to do.
Probably not allowed to do that.
We did something similar at Friscus, from what I remember.
And if we have trouble, and unfortunately, we have trouble, but at least we try to, and hopefully, the owner will try to keep that under control as well. And I know, but sometimes, business owners are at the pleasure of the trash haulers. They don't always have power over them, so I understand that. Anything else? Anybody have anything else? So, I would like to see a motion added just somewhere, and maybe Randy, you can recommend where.
Probably, Condition Number 15 talks about debris and trash shall be routinely collected. You could put a sentence in there that just says, you know, debris and trash shall not be collected prior to blank.
6:00 AM, I guess, or 7:00?
Whatever council... I'd say 7:00.
My opinion, I'd like to see us do a separate condition. 15, to me, reads that it's trash that may have collected in the parking lot.
Yeah, it's all right.
We want specifically call the trash receptacle out here.
The applicant shall work with the trash company to prevent...
Yeah.
Prohibit.
Condition 19.
Somebody like to make that? Anyone willing to make that?
I'd make the motion to add Condition 19, that the applicant would work with the trash company to...
Prohibit.
Prohibit, yeah. Pick up before 7:00 AM? Is that, I mean, is that what we've done in the past, 7:00 AM?
I couldn't, I can't tell you off the top of my head. First, it sounds like...
Yes, we'll go 7:00 AM.
All right. I have a motion and a second to add Condition Number 19 to this application. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I need to abstain due to Dr. Roddy is my dentist.
Very well. Thank you. All right. Motion carries. Now, do I have a motion to, do we have a motion needs to be read on your...
I would move for the following motion. I move, for the purpose of making, taking administrative action, approval of an ASRA detailed site plan for the Roddy Dental Office, PC 17-4. On the basis that the city council finds the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials, and modifications, and amendments, and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for an ASRA detailed site plan as per 158.083 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required of this approval, of which there are 19, shall be, which follow this, and shall be included in the, and I further move that this motion and all its conditions be fully recorded in the minutes of this meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the ASRA application. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, public hearing, PC 18-6.
This is an application filed by Steve Butler, 2440 Dayton Zine Road, Suite B, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45434. The applicant requests administrative site plan review and approval for 1.371 acres of land to construct a new music school. The property is located at the northwest corner of Indian Ripple Road and Grange Hall Road, further described as Book 3, Page 20, Parcel 20, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Does the applicant have anything they'd like to present to council tonight? Can you get your name and address, please?
Good evening. My name is Jim Alt with ALT Architecture, 2440 Dayton Zine Road, Suite B, Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you.
Let's see. I'll make just a brief comment or two, and then I'd like you to, with your permission, provide, give the opportunity to a very special member of our team and in the audience tonight to speak. We are enormously pleased by the very professional assistance that we've received by your, your staff, as we've worked our way through the process of coming to get here before you tonight. And it's a thrill to be able to work with a family with such a remarkable history associated with the city of Beaver Creek. I'd like to point out that I do have the applicant, the actual applicant of record, Steve Butler, the civil engineer in the audience, with me, and he'll be available to answer any questions specifically that you may have. But at this time, I'd like to, with your permission, I'd like to ask the father of the owner of Piano Preparatory School, Tom Schaub, to come up for a moment.
Sure. Please do. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, council. I am Tom Schaub. My address is 3364 Arlington Place, and I'm the proud father of the proprietor and the founder of the Piano Preparatory School, my daughter Jennifer Schaub. She started the school in 2005. She came back from Carnegie Mellon with a degree, a master's degree in piano performance. And while she was there, she was enamored with piano preparatory school they had, and has always wanted to have her own school. So, in 2000, since 2005, she has run the school, first at the old Lofinos Plaza on Dayton Zine, now off of Indian Ripple, across from the Ripple. And she's taught over 10,000 students in those 13 years. She has attracted artists from the Dayton Philharmonic Orchestra and the Dayton Opera to teach at the school, and I couldn't be prouder of her. But this parcel has always been near and dear to her heart. And I think it's important that council understand a little bit of the history of this parcel. 200 years ago, this corner of Grange, Indian Ripple, was part of a large farm owned by Moses Schaub, one of my ancestors. He donated two and a half acres, which was the original size of this parcel, in 1867 to Beaver Creek Schools. And on this lot was built Concord Number 1, the first single-room schoolhouse in Beaver And on this lot was built Concord Number One, the first single room schoolhouse in Beaver Creek School System. A total of fourteen of those schools were constructed, but by nineteen thirty-four, the idea of having single room schoolhouses just didn't work anymore, and so the Beaver Creek Schools sold the property to Russell Benham to become a residence. My father and mother bought it from Russell Benham in nineteen fifty-three, and they began an extensive renovation of this old one-room schoolhouse. And unfortunately, in November of nineteen fifty-nine, an aircraft from Wright-Patterson Air Force Base crashed into the property, and it was destroyed. Nothing has been built on this property since nineteen fifty-nine. When my father passed away, my brother and I sold it for commercial development in nineteen ninety-two. And my daughter has wanted this property to revert it back to a school, and that's what's gonna happen with your approval. So I appreciate your support of the proposal. I certainly appreciate the staff's work to find a way in which, in this rather unusual lot, with rather significant restrictions in size, everything could be put together, and I truly appreciate your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the background. Sometimes life becomes a big circle.
The case you have before you is PC eighteen dash six. It's the Piano Preparatory School Administrative Site Plan Review and Approval. Again, the applicant's looking for approval of a detailed, detailed site plan for the construction of a musical education facility. It's called Piano Prep, but they let me know that it's not gonna be solely piano, but music, a spectrum of music. Property is located at the sou, or, I'm sorry, the northwest corner of Indian Ripple and Grange Hall Road. This is the Burns Garden Center here to the, to the west. To the, it's, it's an odd-shaped lot, because out here, this is actually City Right-Away, so it's got some frontage on Grange Hall, and then some frontage on our Right-Away, and then frontage on Indian Ripple Road, so it's a, it's a double frontage lot. Again, the majority of the frontage actually is on Grange Hall Road, though. The property is Zoned O-one Office, and, and music schools are allowed as a conditional use within O-one districts. At planning commission earlier this month, they got both the resolution for recommendation of approval for the ASRA, as well as a conditional use approval for the Piano Preparatory School or Music School on this site. So the use is approved for the one point seven acres that they're looking at this evening, I'm sorry, one point four acres they're looking at this evening. To the, to west again is a B-two, and then the rest of the property is surrounded by R-one, a single-family residential. Of course, on two of the sides, it's across from major thoroughfares within the city. The reason that we're here tonight as part of the ASRA is because, as you, as you can see on the land use plan, the one point four acres falls within Indian Ripple Planning Area Number Three, and as such, any site plans on the site or any construction on the site requires ASRA approval. Seen here is the proposed site plan to the, to the one point four acres. They're looking for only one access point to the site, which is as far north as practical, away from the intersection of, the signalized intersection of Indian Ripple and Grange Hall, so it'd be one access point to the site. In terms of parking, there's, there wasn't really anything for me to go back, and there's nothing on our list about music schools. So we kinda worked with the applicant, asked how many students, and he said the maximum number of students that they would have at any one time would be twelve. And it's not really, I mean, it's not really set up for full-time, large classes, it's one-on-one instruction, so we looked at it, twelve students, one-to-one ratio, so we required twenty-four, recommend requiring twenty-four, they're showing twenty-eight. So it's staff's opinion that they have ample number of parking for their business model. Also, in terms of, I know we talked about this before, about trash receptacles, their particular business model, they're not, at this time, not gonna have a large dumpster, but have a residential-style toter and have that picked up. So it's, it's a smaller operation than the, the application we talked about before. In storm, in terms of stormwater detention, this site is a challenging site, you know, just in terms of the grading and the, and the sheer shape of the property. So one of the, this pond here, which is to the Burns Garden Center, you know, their engineers are looking at it, and, you know, we all believe, based on some preliminary results and, and looking at, and analysis, that this pond at Burns is sized appropriately, and they're, they're looking to secure a stormwater detention easement, if they can't secure that for any reason, but, you know, we feel that it's, we've got a good feeling that that's gonna happen. You know, there is an opportunity for underground stormwater detention, but, but regardless, you know, if this site plan is approved, you know, they, we wouldn't, they wouldn't be allowed to build without properly maintaining that stormwater, any stormwater runoff. But the, the plan now is to utilize the existing pond over at Burns, and Burns, from our understanding, Burns is not against it, because they'll have them help with the existing vegetation that's out at the stormwater, at the pond now. Seen here is the proposed architectural rendering of the building. It's kinda hard to see from this rendering, but you can see the building is slightly curved, so there's a slight curve on the building here in the front. But, you know, their intent was to kinda model an older schoolhouse with modern features, so, you know, they're using all brown and red brick with some cast stone sills and, and pieces going over the, the windows. Staff feels this is an attractive building, will fit right in on the site, and it'll fit within the area. Again, this is the proposed landscape plan, and again, they're, they're using a good mixture of the decorative trees, shrubs, and shade trees, and will add to the overall aesthetics of the site. A few selected conditions, again, if they go with a dumpster in the future, you know, we'll, we'll require them to screen it with an enclosure. Any wall and ground signage will meet the O-one standards. They didn't, they didn't have any particular signage with this application, but in the future, should they want signage, so that'd be the twenty-five square foot ground sign, and allowed one square foot of signage per linear foot of frontage on their walls. Also, because of the residential across the street, you know, we, and to the north, we wanted to require, and we have a requirement for sixteen-foot maximum light fixtures, and their construction hours being seven AM to seven PM Monday through Saturday for exterior construction. Planning commission and staff both recommend approval of their requests, and I'll be here to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, this is public input time. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address council on this application? Looks like a familiar face walking up this way.
Mitchell Kossler, five forty-five Hilltop Road, Beaver Creek Township. Just, I didn't know this case was here, but the detention pond that's on Burns property, I designed that when we did the, the site plan for the initial landscape development there. And at that time, we worked with the owner, was interested in having his property sized so they wouldn't have to do two detention ponds, and we designed it to take in account commercial development for that one point four acre. So, and subsequently, to that design, there's been a little modification to EPA's stormwater runoff requirements and the city's requirements, and it now requires water quality control. So all they have to do is just a small structural change to the outlet to temporarily pond a little bit of water, so I think they'll have adequate size.
Thank you very much.
If I'd known that, I would've brought my file folder with me and given it to you.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right, thanks Mitch. Anyone else like to address council on this application? Seeing none, we will close the public input and move on. Council input, we will start on the other side. Councilmember Kern.
I had a question for the planning department. Would you, would you just validate the issue of egress from the property going north on Grange Hall? I noticed, your argument saying it was no problem was, that, was the volume and the time of the day, is that correct?
Right. In terms of, we also work with the applicant to get a little bit of widening on the, on Grange Hall, so that there's...
Oh, you did?
It's, it's an ongoing process, but yeah, I mean...
Because that's pretty tight in there.
Right. But we also want to make sure cars get around if they have to. I believe, were you here at planning commission when it went to planning commission? No, okay. I can't get my months right, but we work, we're working to get also a little bit of extra payments so they can, they can have a...
So there would be kind of a...
But, but even, talking with our engineer, of course, he's not here, I mean, he's, the volume and the, it's just not, there's not gonna be a time when there's gonna be a ton of traffic in and out, so we couldn't imagine more than a car or two waiting for a minute to cross anyway.
Okay. Fine, thank you.
Councilmember Upton.
Thank you, Mayor Stone. No real comments from me, just a thank you to the Schaub family for wanting to continue to invest in Beaver Creek. Glad to have the history and glad to keep it moving.
Thank you. Councilmember Van.
No comments. Excited to have him. I'm proud of her. I've watched her since she was in high school, so I'm excited.
Councilmember Rush. No comment. Councilmember Littrell.
I, I just wanna have the same comments that Councilmember Upton has, is that thank you for staying in Beaver Creek. I was worried when they moved the first time from the senior center area, so, and so I, I'm delighted to see the opportunities for our students, not only in Beaver Creek, for, from other areas that can come to Beaver Creek and, and have this great opportunity, so. And I love the design, so, I love that concept, so thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Garcia.
No comment, but best of luck. It's great.
And I too, am quite satisfied, and like I say, life's a circle sometimes, and just circled back around, and welcome back home to that site, to you and your family, so. That being said, anybody have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, there's no further comment. I'd like to move for the purpose of taking administrative action, approval of ASRA detailed site plan for the Piano Preparatory School, PC eighteen dash six, on the basis that city council finds the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials, modifications, amendments, and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for an ASRA detailed site plan as per section one fifty-eight point zero eight three of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required for this approval, which there are eighteen, shall be as follows, and they're included in the, in the motion, and I further move that this motion, with all conditions, be fully recorded in the minutes of the council meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve this ASRA application. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Abstentions, and this time, thank you. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Ordinance eighteen dash zero six.
This is a third reading of ordinance rezoning approximately three point five acres of land from R dash one A, one-family residential to MXPUD mixed plan, mixed-use planned unit development, located at fifteen oh five North Fairfield Road, further described as Book Five, Page Five, Parcel One Twenty-Six, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. All right, this is the third reading. This ordinance, the motion, was sponsored by Councilmember Kern. Any input from council?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance eighteen dash zero six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Next, ordinance eighteen dash zero seven.
This is a third reading of an ordinance rezoning two point four zero two acres of land from commercial planned unit development, one twenty-four dash eighty-six, to commercial planned unit development eighteen dash two, located on the west side of Esquire Drive, approximately two hundred and fifty feet north of the intersection of Lakeview Drive and Esquire Drive, further described as Book Four, Page Five, Parcel Fourteen, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Again, this is a third reading. Any input from council? This, this ordinance was sponsored by Councilmember Van.
I would move to approve ordinance eighteen dash zero seven.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance eighteen dash zero seven. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, ordinance eighteen dash zero eight.
This is a third reading of an ordinance repealing current section ninety-four point zero seven unsolicited printed materials of the City of Beaver Creek Code of Ordinances and adopting new section ninety-four point zero seven unsolicited printed materials of the City of Beaver Creek Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. This motion was sponsored by Councilmember Littrell. Are there any comments from council? Seeing none?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve eighteen dash oh eight.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance eighteen dash zero eight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Next, resolution eighteen dash twenty-one. A resolution, I'm sorry, eighteen dash twenty-one.
This is a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council determining necessity of levying a renewal tax in excess of the ten mil limitation for providing and maintaining motor vehicles, communications, other equipment, buildings, and site for such buildings used directly in the operation of the police department for the payment of salaries of permanent or part-time police, communications, or administrative personnel to operate the same, including the payment of any employer contributions required for such personnel under section one four five point four eight or seven four two point three three of the revised code as authorized by the Ohio Revised Code, which levy shall be four and five tenths mils, which is a renewal levy to run for a continuing period of time pursuant to section five seven zero five point one nine and subsection five seven zero five point one nine J, as amended, of the Ohio Revised Code, and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith.
Thank you, Mr. Casera.
Good evening, I didn't write that.
You did.
You did a great job.
Are you ready? Short and abbreviated sentences for me, so, this is the current four point five mil police levy is set to expire in tax year two thousand and eighteen. The renewal is submitted to be placed to the voters on November sixth of two thousand and eighteen, this coming November, and the city council, in our last work session, have reviewed the existing levy and want to continue the renewal of the four point five mil levy to fund police operations. Again, that four point five mils represents five point eight million dollars and about sixty-two percent of the police budget itself. So in order to place that, this particular levy on the November sixth ballot, there's a couple of steps that you have to take. The first is to do a resolution, which we have before us, requesting certification of that revenue from the county auditor for the four point five mil tax, police tax levy proposal. As Diane read, that it's all in compliance with fifty-seven oh five point oh three of the ORC, and we send this resolution over to the county auditor, who certifies the revenue, and returns that to us within ten days. After that, what we'll have to do is, and what you'll see is, on July ninth, the city council, by two-thirds of a vote, have to adopt a resolution to actually place the levy on the ballot. Again, in order to meet the August eighth deadline for the board of elections, we'll have to do that in July, the July ninth meeting, to accommodate their timeline there, so, so again, what you have before you is the first step, sending it to the county auditor to certify the revenue that would be generated from the four point five mil levy. So, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Does any council have any questions? Anyone?
For the public, I would just clarify that we discussed this in a work session, and feel that the funding is needed for the police department, and this was the best option of the choices, from what I saw. So, thank you for the staff and chief for putting together a conservative and workable plan to provide good service to our citizens.
On that same premise, if you, Mr. Casera, if you could, if you could just comment a little bit about the rollback, staying in place for this?
Yeah, the, this particular levy was last passed in two thousand and fourteen, and what we did was, it was a three point seven mil levy and a point eight mil increase on top of that. The three point seven, the reason why it's split up that way is that the state legislature passed a new law that said anything after two thousand and fourteen would not get the rollback and the homestead exemption. So what we did was, by splitting it out, we preserved that twelve and a half percent rollback that we get from the state, did put that on the city residents, and therefore it's broken into two pieces, but that does preserve the majority of that twelve and a half percent rollback that's provided by the state, that, again, they've passed legislation that said anything in the future for additional levies or new levies would not have the rollback in place. So, again, we took that into account when we did the legislation in two thousand and fourteen, again, to preserve that and not shift that burden from the state back to our residents, so.
And this will continue that, the same...
With the three point seven, yes. And Councilmember Van made a good point, I probably should've emphasized that a little bit more, the four point five mils is a renewal for our continuing period of time for the upcoming ballot language, so again, it's a renewal... of time for the upcoming ballot language. So, again, it's a renewal, no new tax increase for a continuing period of time, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
How many are permanent of the police levies?
There's three permanent levies.
Three permanent?
That were passed in the 80s.
80s.
Right.
Okay.
They were all fairly minor. I would say at the time I had .81 and 1.2 or something like that, and I think it was like 85, 87, 89 or something. They're very old levies that initially funded the operation of the Police Department back then.
Anything else? Do I have a motion?
Well, if no further comment, I would move to approve Resolution 18-21.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 18-21. All in favor, signal if you're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, Resolution 18-22.
This is a resolution to enter into a master supply agreement with AEP Energy, Inc., for all services related to supplying the electric requirements for the city's electrical governmental aggregation program.
Thank you. Yes, please.
We have been working, as you know, council, with the aggregation program. We did get certified by the PUCO, Public Utilities Commission of Ohio, for gas and electric. But tonight, what we have before you is the electric. So, Daniel Dieter's here, Venergy Alliances is here, and is going to give us the results of, we went out for bid, went out for pricing, I should say, by the electric suppliers, and, you know, it's a quick turnaround, so he had to coordinate when they asked for versus when we have council meetings. So, just today, he got the final results, and he's here to give us the update on the results, and if it's council's recommendation, you know, it's going to be my recommendation to enter into it. I already know what the rate is. It is below, it's a good rate, so it would save our taxpayers, residents, many, much money, which is what we want to do. But we can discuss more of the details once he gets into that. So, go ahead, Mr. Dieter.
Sure. Can we give you a little bit of background on kind of where we?
Please.
I'll give you a quick version. So, on May 3rd, as Mr. Landrum said, nearly 15 years after the voters voted electric aggregation in, Beaver Creek became certified. So, kind of an odd situation, but I've found that it's happened around, and we're handling some other communities that that's happened to also. So, basically, we put it immediately out for pricing, and we asked these companies to take a look at the data given by DPNL, and we got three bids back and one no bid. Generally, that doesn't mean anything other than the fact that the risk is probably too great for the size of the company. Beaver Creek is a very large area, so it wasn't uncommon to see one of those. So, the initial prices that came back, AEP's was .05029 cents, DynaG's was .0494 cents, Constellation was .05039 cents. Pretty close bids, which means that it was pretty accurate. The problem with the low bid, DynaG, was they do not do budget billing, and probably about 1,500 or more of your residents do budget billing, and I think that would kind of be a nightmare for mostly everybody, and you really don't want to put somebody in that, you know, position to, if they are on budget billing. AEP does offer budget billing. So, after some negotiation with AEP, we got the price down to .05015 cents, which was lower than their initial bid. We get these bids, we renegotiate the price, and then we ask them to submit the Two things about the AEP deal, that's, it's going to be a 9% discount off the price to compare, which is about 5.5 cents, a little bit above that, per kilowatt hour. They also do budget billing, and we have a revolving door program, as we discussed prior times, where people can come and go as they please. There's no, even after the opt-out period, which will, if this happens tonight, will go out in about 10 to 12 days. That really doesn't mean anything to us, because in their terms and conditions in the contract, they have to accept everyone, they have to let everyone out without any termination fee whatsoever. So, by way of a little bit of context, we did Huber Heights bid, and theirs is .0502, so it's below that bid, and Xenia was just one, another company did it by DynaG at 0502, and they do not have budget billing. So, that's kind of where it stands. It's going to be a nice savings. We think it'll be between $30,000 and $50,000 for the community each month, and we find that because we're dealing with kind of some smaller numbers, you know, 5 cents a kilowatt hour, that that money doesn't usually leave the community. That goes to buy an extra lunch or, you know, spend a little more somewhere else. So, a lot of times, we find that, you know, those things, that's how they occur. It's not like they just sock that eight or 10 bucks away in their savings account. So, Energy Alliance is recommending that, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you very much.
I would want to add that this is a three-year, and like you said, the biggest thing is that they can come and go. I mean, that's a big thing. So, if they get a, and I will warn residents right now that because of aggregation, they're going to get door-to-door salespeople and calls and mailers like crazy. The aggregation system, once they find out that we're, you know, there's aggregation here, they think it's a goldmine. And so, they'll come in, just like a credit card company will, and say, hey, for the first six months, there's 0% interest, and then they hit you after six months with 30% interest, and you're like, oh, I want out of this. Then you find out there's a $250 fee to get out of the program. See, so that's the trap that I caution residents on. So, but unlike here, if you do find a really good deal that a resident does want to go into, and it's better, and there's no tricks to it whatsoever, then they can get out of the city program, go to it. If it lasts a year with a good rate, and then it goes higher, and there's no, say, no cancellation fee for them with the other program, or if they want to pay $100, whatever it would be, to get out of it, they're always welcome back to our rate. So, it's just a no, it's a win-win for everybody. If they find a better rate that they really want to go with, they can. It's doubtful with the purchasing power that we are having as a city, and that's what this is about, aggregation. We're taking a massive number of households and usage and saying, hey, what's the best price versus an individual homeowner that, you know, can't hardly negotiate. Maybe, like I said, for a short period of time, they can get a better rate, maybe, but there's, seems to be mostly, and Mr. Dieter's can tell you, there's always a catch, usually. So, I am recommending this as well. I think it'd be great. The biggest part for this will be our education of our residents, which we're going to prepare to do a press release with all the information, and because if council approves this tonight, they will, within 10 days or so, be getting opt-out letters. They'll be given every opportunity to opt out. If they don't opt out, they'll automatically be enrolled into the program. Now, for those residents as well, I just want to state that if you're already with another contractor, another electric supplier, you've already chosen and selected, we will not be sending you anything, you will not be changed, you will not be switched. It's only those residents that automatically are ready, are defaulted to, is it the Dayton Power and Light?
Utility, yes.
Utility, that means you have not made any selection in electric choice. So, those are the only ones that will be sent the opt-out letter. Now, those that have, already have another provider, if they want, they hear it me tonight, or they see the press release later, and they want to get out of there and join ours, they can do that as well.
I would recommend that they let it run its course.
Yep.
Because of the termination fee.
Termination fee, yep.
And then, you can also get in at any time in the program, even if you are with that third-party provider already. I did talk to a resident from Beaver Creek today, and he is with a third-party provider. He's paying nearly seven cents.
Yep.
Wow. So, he was not very happy when I told him what utility rate was. Had he done nothing, he'd be saving off of what he's doing now. So, but we, we will, we talked to many, many, many residents from all of our areas, and we make sure that they get the straight story. But I will tell you this, and Mr. Landrum's right, if you look on the apples-to-apples today, there will not, on the PUCO's website, I will, I dare, I won't want to bet yet, but I'll say that there's not a three-year deal at that price with no termination fees on that website. That's where most people go.
Will every single citizen get a letter?
No.
Only those that are?
Only those that are on the eligible list, and the eligible list are folks that are with the utility now, that do not have a third-party supplier.
Okay.
So, folks that have another deal going, but they're, and that'll be on the, that'll be on our informational stuff on the website, if they call us, and they can either get out of their, theirs, you know, they have to wait two months, they have to wait five months, the day they call us, we can enroll them at no charge.
And if they ever want out, they can get out of ours at no charge.
Yep.
It seems like in the next newsletter, you need to clarify this very clearly, because I assumed before that every single resident was going to get an informational letter, and now it's just the people who never switched off of DPNL.
There's about 12,000 that were on the, that were on the eligible list.
Okay.
So, of the 20?
That's pretty good, because you only have?
I think there were 20,000 meters.
Okay.
But that's not, give or take. That's, that doesn't, that's not representative of the amount of people. I mean, somebody, there are companies out there that have 10 meters.
We'll be doing a press release, if approved, we'll be doing a press release this week to notify them of, you know, everybody of what's happening. Also, we're creating an aggregation spot on our website that answers all the aggregation problems and has a copy of the press release, and really walks everybody through the 2020 questions, so to speak, about, you know, aggregation, what is it, is it for me? They'll have the contact information as well, because we won't be personally handling it. We'll get some calls, I'm sure, but anything specific as far as, you know, how do I sign up, or I want to know more specific about my bill, will be, there'll be a number specifically. Am I correct? Is that 800 number, I believe?
Well, initially, the PUCO requires us to do an 800 number to AEP, but on the website, folks will be able to call our office and talk to me or anyone else that's there.
And once they set up that 1-800 number to the electric provider, they know that that number is Beaver Creek, City of Beaver Creek.
Yeah.
I just have a suggestion. So, when you're talking about that, one of the things I know that people, they really don't like to call, I'm going to say vendors, they have that connection with the city. So, it might be a nice idea. I know you said you're going to have questions, but the most common, commonly asked questions?
We're putting that on our website.
On there. That way, they might feel a little more comfortable in doing that.
Yeah, we have a fact that, that answers. We get the same five or six questions. When does it start? What's the rate? Am I eligible? You know, what's, yeah, those things. That's, that's.
I, one part of the reason I was glad to help assist with the aggregation is I went through this at my former employer. So, the good news is, I've been through this initial startup of aggregation, and I know the phone calls that we got. So, I've already, with Mr. Dieter's, have been asking for certain stuff, because I know the calls that will come, and the questions that will come, and.
And you mentioned that.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's good. I'm very excited for the city and the residents that will see some savings, and that, you know, the city doesn't have to do this, but I want to know that the residents know that we have your best interest at heart, that we're offering this. It's not a force at all, but you'll be able to save. If it's only 20 bucks a month for, you know, or every couple months, it's another lunch, or it's another thing to pay on a bill or something. But it's, it's better to keep it in your pocket than going, going out the window, so to speak.
I always said, if you had $100 and you knew it was in your garbage can, would you walk out and go get it? I would.
Good way to look at it. Anything else? Please.
Mr. Dieter, could you comment? What happened in the city of Dayton? There was an article about their aggregation folded.
Yes.
And all the residents who were on it are now back with Dayton, but what, Dayton Power and Light, could you tell council what happened there?
Yeah, we're actually, we're actually going to go meet with Dayton.
Really?
Yeah. They were in a percent-off deal, which, in the north, it happens a lot.
Okay.
If you've been watching any of the FirstEnergy stuff.
Yeah.
They did a lot of FirstEnergy. They did, I mean, they're the utility, but they also have a retail end. They did a lot of percent-off. Those deals can go south pretty quick.
Wow.
Because sometimes, you know, they just don't, you know, they're saying, we'll give you a 2% or 3% or 5% off, or, and then, when it comes time to pay that bill, if energy's moving, like it does, every day, you know, they may be upside down in that deal. And it sounded to me like they got upside down in that percent-off deal. But I don't have firsthand knowledge of that, because I don't have access to there.
Interesting.
But those things are going south all over the state. This, if, if, if I'm given the ability tonight to tee this thing up, I'm walking out of here, and I'm going to call the guy at AEP and say, it's done, and he's going to go buy his energy, the whole energy for all three years in about a half hour. So, that's, that's how we ensure that those, those things don't happen.
Okay. Thank you.
But we hope the city of Dayton will come around and.
Interesting.
And do it with us.
Anyone else? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I would move to approve Resolution 18-22.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to.
Mayor, the copy, the one at least I've got on the agenda, it has blanks.
No, it's been updated. She read it.
I read it with AEP.
You read it, okay, with the address and everything, too? Okay.
Yes.
All right, because for the one that's official here on the agenda, it's blanked still, so.
Just because we didn't know until this afternoon.
Yeah, we didn't know what the bid price was officially. It now is a substitute motion, not what was.
It has now been substituted. It's not technically what was in the agenda. So, we're now adopting something not in the agenda. So, really, we are substituting that which was before the public in the agenda.
We should address it.
And that, you either fill it in or you substitute it. That's, that's my point. Yeah.
What action do you suggest?
Just, the clerk gave the names, just a simple motion to fill it, fill it in with the address. That's all that needs to be done.
I would move to approve Resolution 18-22 with the address that was filled in this afternoon compared to what was posted on the web.
Is that adequate?
Not suffice.
Is that adequate?
Absolutely. Oh, absolutely. Thank you. That's all. That was really very simple.
All right, I have a motion and a, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signal if you're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, city managers report. Mr. Landrum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just give a few project updates. Everybody's probably curious. Dayton-Zenia Road widening project, contractor's made great progress. If you've noticed, South bybound curb has been installed, and they're going to be completing all the storm sewer curb installation along the road. New asphalt along the south side of the street is anticipated in the very near future. So, over the next few weeks, though, the contractor's going to plan on completing the grading work behind the new curbs, continued sidewalk installation, and restoration of driveways and parking lots. The majority of work is anticipated to be completed by late June or early July, and everybody can say hallelujah to that. Shakertown Road project, that's coming right along, very close to being complete. The installation of new sidewalks along the south side of the street, final work remains to be completed, our driveway restoration, spinal grading, and a little bit of seating. So, that should be about done. Party in the Parks, a couple things here. Party in the Parks is going to be starting Fridays at 5:30. The first one is June 1st at the Seville Farm Estates Park, and June 22nd at Stafford Park. So, please, again, use your In Touch or the website, Facebook, to get the information, to check when the party in your park is going to be. But it's always on Friday at 5:30. Other recreational events in June, Miss Beaver Creek Civic Pageant, June 8th, Beaver Creek High School at 7:00 PM. Summer Concert Series, these are always possible, popular, Sundays at 7:00 PM at Dominic Laffino Park. You know, these are. You know, these are great to have. June 3rd will be, what's it called, Five Inch? June 10th, Danny Voris. June 17th, Sower Crop German Band. June 24th, Kettering Civic Band. Again, please check the InTouch, either through the website or a hard copy that was mailed out, Facebook or Twitter, for all the recreational and parks activities. There's so much I cannot, I could be here to rest of the night. Speaking of another department, the Golf Club, 2018 starts, it was very successful last year. We enjoyed it. I know I had a couple, couple ones, we've, Mayor and I, I learned that I'm, you know, the earplugs sometimes, but very successful on Party on the Patio, the band, they have been great. Live music, there's no cover charge, cold drinks and good food. They have a special bar menu that they, so it's not the entire menu, it's a shortened version of the bar menu. But do I need to remind you that Beaver Creek Golf Club won Best Sandwich at the Taste of the Green this year? So very good food. So there's a list of the bands and the dates, starting June 1st, June 29th. These are all Friday, Fridays from 6:00 to 9:00, July 13th, August 3rd and August 24th. So please come out to the Party on the Patio, it's a good time, a good, safe environment. I did also, just last thing, had a great Memorial Day event. Thank you, Mayor. He, very good and toast to, host to staff for hosting that or for putting that on. I wanted everybody to know the video's coming out soon. It was recorded, so if you weren't able to make it to Memorial Day, you can check out Facebook. We, I posted a short video of the National Anthem being sang yesterday. But the video of the whole event will be coming and we get to hear what everybody had to say and we'll post that to YouTube and Facebook. So that's all I had tonight.
All right, thank you. Well, you've already covered Party on the Patio, which I was going to make sure what got covered tonight. That's always fun.
Yeah.
I agree, we enjoy those. I, too, want to sound off to Parks and Rec. They did a wonderful job setting up and getting, putting everything together for the Memorial Day event. The weather was warm, but it was nice. I mean, it was, got a little warm with a, with a suit on, but otherwise, it was, it was a beautiful day. Thanks to Brigadier General Guterman for being our guest speaker and to all the other organizations, the scouts, the, the airmen that were there, the VFW, the American Legion, everybody that pitched in and made the success. I got a lot of wonderful comments so far on the event. And I think we set a record, sort of like some of these council meetings, it was only like twenty-five minutes. So I think that was a record for a Memorial Day event.
Very sure.
But the heat warranted that and so everybody else appreciated it. I did, I was out at the VA on Saturday for a event, Veterans Administration Medical Center. But the, they had a, an event for the weekend and one of the things they were celebrating was the official end of World War I. This is the hundredth anniversary for that. But while I was out there, I, they had an art contest that was regional and we had two Beaver Creek students place in the art contest. And I'm going to probably bring them in at some point after I talk to their parents, so I'm not going to use their last name. But Jonah and Reed, which are brother and sister, came in first and second in the K through second grade class. And so hopefully, I'll be able to get them in one day. And I talked to the parents briefly and they'll come in and maybe show us what they, what they did. But it's the little things that make life fun and that was a lot of fun. And that's all I have for right now. How about? Councilmember Van, yours?
I have no, no report.
All right.
Enjoyed Memorial Day, but, yeah, no report.
Councilmember Rush?
Thank you. The only thing I have is I look forward to the Miss Beaver Creek Civic Pageant. I will be a judge for that pageant. This will be my second time being a judge, I just look forward to that. And nonetheless, it's on my birthday, so I look forward to that too. That's it.
All right. Councilmember Little?
I just wanted to thank the Optimus Club again because I noticed several flags around the city, which thank the residents for paying that small fee to do that. I think that's wonderful, I'm on the list to do one. I think Councilmember Upton's on the list. So just a great opportunity to show your community and your patriotism there. The other thing, just a reminder to city manager, maybe we could have our one-man show, Matt, kind of take a cruise down North Fairfield, since we do have some buildings that are empty. I noticed that some of the lawns are? Yeah, they're, and again, that's our thoroughfare and we need to make sure that we keep that pristine as Beaver Creek residents expect. So I know it's hard to keep up, but that's one of the areas we really need to, to watch. It makes it look a little bad. But other than that, again, Parks and Recreation, I just can't say it enough. I mean, I've worked for the county, I've, the City Fairborn, City Beaver Creek a little bit. But I just want to say, the staff here is really wonderful, not just from Parks and Rec, but the police department, our, the guys here, planning, I mean, all the way, Mr. Casera. I mean, really, I mean, it was nice to hear the compliments that the applicants had this evening, but just, that's just a, I just can't stress enough what a great employee workforce the city has. Just always complimentary, people always hear good comments in the community about everyone. So just thank you to, thank you for that and thanks for working for the city. We're lucky to have you.
And they're what makes our life easy.
They are.
Absolutely. Councilmember Upton?
Thank you, Mayor Stone. Really just a quick comment to follow up on a past conversation that we had, you know, around littering and unsolicited materials being left at properties. Coincidentally, shortly after we had that conversation, I was doing some yard work and one of those vehicles came by and threw one into my driveway. So fortunately, I live on a cul-de-sac, so they had to come back around. And I stood in the middle of the street and handed back the, the documents, whatever they were. And the lady said very nicely, she said, I can take you off the list if you'd like. I said, that would be wonderful, excellent. How can, how can I tell people about this? She says, well, if they catch us in their neighborhood, they can just tell us and we'll take it off the list. Anyway, I was very optimistic that, that I was now not going to get this. Well, the next Sunday, I was out doing yard work again, same vehicle come by and threw the same material in my yard. And I'm like, oh. This time, I didn't get up to catch them in time, but I was a little disappointed. So I'll be looking for that form letter that we discussed and be sending that in. Other than that, though, I appreciate everyone's efforts around Memorial Day. You know, staff did a wonderful job. So many of us have the opportunity and privilege to take the day off and, you know, really remember what the day's about. But it's because of our staff not taking the day off that we have that opportunity. So really appreciate everyone's efforts around that. That's all for me.
Councilmember Curran?
A comment, again, the mayor enjoyed the Memorial Day program and I thought it was outstanding and comments in general were great.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you. So I was actually able to go to Cleveland over the weekend and I was in Willowick, which is a suburb outside of Cleveland. And they had, for stretches of miles, kind of what we do in North Fairfield Road with the American flags hanging on the lampposts, but on the other side of that, they had a hometown hero with a picture of a veteran that grew up in that area or lived in that area, sponsored by that member's family. And it's prob, we've already missed Memorial Day and it's probably way too big of an undertaking to get done for Fourth of July this year, but it is definitely something that I want to look into for next year. Because with us living so close to Wright Patterson Air Force Base and the number of veterans that we have currently living in the area or those who move out of the area for military affairs, I think that would be a fantastic way to show our support and appreciation for those members of our community. So I will definitely be looking into that over the next couple of months. Like I said, it's probably way too short notice and big of an undertaking, but I think that's something that the community itself would be very receptive to. And it was just gorgeous, I mean, miles, stretches of miles, on every single lamppost within like a two-foot distance. So it was really great. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that I noticed the city manager survey report went out recently and I was a little concerned when it came out because I think that was assigned to me as vice mayor at the beginning of the retreat. So now that that came out, I would just like to ask that that be reassigned, so that my name is added to the list so I can review the results before that meeting with the city manager. And I think this happened last year too, that?
Deborah was the one. Deborah was always concerned because she always thought it was the vice mayor's job. And so I know she brought that up at the retreat.
Yeah, so that was brought up this year at the retreat too. So if it was my responsibility, I would definitely like to be the one who had taken on that responsibility, but it got out before I got a chance to do it. So that is the one thing that I ask, is that I be added for that review. So that is all.
And I will apologize for not remembering what happened at the retreat.
Oh, that's fine. It was a little while ago.
It was in the winter. I feel like I'm still there.
That's been years ago.
That was just two days ago, the winter though.
Yeah, it was just two days ago. It's now the middle of August.
All right. Citizen comments. Anyone here have anything to say that they'd like to talk to council about? Seeing none, we will move on. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion for adjourn.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.